All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. I need a motion to approve the agenda, but I'd like to get the motion to approve the agenda as presented, adding a discussion of the bowling alley lease, Davenport study, and staffing and personnel. And we will get that code for personnel read before we go into closed session. So can I have a motion as I presented it there? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Mr. Van Norbeek.
Well, thank you all for having me tonight. And it was the first time I sit with Mr. Ingram and all of you guys. And thank you for the confidence that you've shown asking me to assist, and I do appreciate it. As much as anybody, I'd like to recognize Ben Green in the audience for letting me do this and letting the town of Blackstone. Let me permit me to do that which my profession dictates. And thank you for the opportunity. County administrators' report must be pretty broad. And I've had two weeks, probably a total of eight hours that I've, 10 hours that I've spent with the county. And I'll start it out by saying I've been impressed with the folks that you have. I think they're certainly capable. And I think we can build on those staffing positions, recreate some things, improve on some things, but also learn from some of the things that the ladies and gentlemen are doing right. I don't want this to sound like in any form or fashion this is anything negative towards any of the staff. Andrea's been amazing. Susan's been amazing. The ladies have been helpful and welcoming. But you've got some tough times ahead of you at the county. I think you're left, we're left with the cupboard a little bare. And when I say that, and I've spoken with the staffers and I've met with them, nobody understands what somebody else's job is. Andrea and Susan are probably the most closely joined at the hip, but you've got one person who can run a payroll. You've got one person that can pay, cut a check. You've got one person that knows how to do the accounting side of things, okay? And there's been little or no crossover. However, in the building department and some of the things the ladies do, they communicate fabulous way, and that's great. That's not okay in today's world, and you can see why. We've had a lot of turnover in the staff and the finance side of things. And there's a lot of shoulders getting shrugged because I don't know how to do it or I was never taught how to do it or no one showed me, okay? And any of those above comments in today's world can't work, okay? So we've got to improve on that. That is item number one for me, I believe, obviously with your consent, that we've got to put people in places and other people know what they do in the event I'm on vacation, in the event I've decided to move, I've decided to resign, I've decided to take another position. Because as of today, town of Blackstone employees are still gonna have to cut the AP checks for the county because we don't have somebody who can do that, okay? There's a lot of work to do in the organization, a lot. I think the cupboard was left bare, and it's not the employees' fault, but I think that the administration should have demanded they learn how to do other things, other than just those things that they are specifically assigned. That being said, that was the good news. The bad news is, and I need to share this with you, and I've met with the Director of Social Services. I don't know if the new folks, Mr. Ingram, or maybe some of you know what Comprehensive Services Act is. Comprehensive Services Act is a very, very expensive, primarily funded by the state, series of programs that are geared towards all the departments at the county level, schools, social services, the county, everybody that demands services primarily for juvenile, individuals who may need additional assistance that schools can't specifically provide, health department can't specifically provide, or social services. Oftentimes, these are alternative school. Oftentimes, these are different types of learning environments and social environments for these kids. It's called Comprehensive Services Act. It is a county position, it's a county employee. That employee departed county employment in November. What we have is called a CPMT. There's a FAP team and a CPMT. FAP team is made up of clinicians, and they make a recommendation to the CPMT as to what services are gonna be required or need to be rendered for an individual child. The CPMT is made up of Director of Social Services, currently the county treasurer, other folks on that team. I think there is actually even a parent representative. When that employee departed in November, the CPMT, for some reason, wasn't told, and I don't think they could, but they continued to provide services. However, no drawdowns were filed since November, okay? The county's in arrears $1.4 million currently with the state of Virginia because those drawdowns have not been submitted. Those were primarily from last fiscal year, as I understand it, from the Social Services Director, who was very forthright. Our new CSA Director, who has just been hired, who by all accounts is very talented and can certainly help clean this up, we have until September 30th to get those drawdowns submitted to the state or the county will forfeit $1.4 million. In addition, I have authorized the CSA Coordinator in Prince Edward County, and I apologize, I don't remember her name, at $50 an hour to come in and assist a very new CSA Coordinator with preparing those drawdowns. And she will be doing so and has agreed to. And if, or every expectation, we'll have that drawn down, those drawdowns prepared by the end of September.
I believe it's the 25th.
End of September.
We gotta have them finished by the 25th.
You're aware of it too.
Yes, Ms. Reed called me today.
That's not good. That's not okay. But we gotta do better. And these are the things that would need to be straightened out, that those drawdowns should have been, if the CSA, the Comprehensive Services Act Coordinator departs in November, there has to be somebody else who knows how to do that job, just like every other job. Someone else has got to cut payroll, someone else has got to cut account payroll check. But there was no assignment, and it just went by the wayside. I'm glad Shannon, I believe is her name, Shannon Reed?
Yes.
She was very forthright, very transparent, and I told her tonight that I was gonna let you guys know about this, and she said by all means, happy to do it and happy for you to do it. But sadly, it is a county position, and it's, this is unacceptable. Gotta fix that, okay? Additional items we can talk about tonight, I don't wanna overdo it too much at one time. If you'd like to move on to the next item, but I think that's enough for.
Well, board members, do y'all have any questions about what Mr. Van Norbeek has stated so far?
I don't have any questions. I would just like to thank you for bringing this to the board's attention.
Shannon brought it to me, so thank Shannon as well because this needs to be discussed, it needs to be talked about. You guys need to know because come October 1st, if it hadn't been addressed, boy, you guys have been looking for somebody to explain that. And so, thank you to Shannon. She doesn't know me very well, but in the one, two meetings that we've had so far, she's been very forthright, and I consider her to be someone who wants to do a good job and would be helpful to a county, the county administrator in the future.
Okay, all right. Well, and while I'm thinking about it, Ms. Kelly, could, if you get an opportunity, could you find that closed session for personnel? I just don't know which one it is. It's just for personnel discussion. I can't remember if it's A1 or A3. I don't wanna go in for the wrong thing, if you don't mind. Thank you. A1, okay, thank you. Okay, next one is the Davenport Study, board members.
Davenport Study. I've had an opportunity to read the documents. I've had an opportunity to absorb the documents. Two weeks ago, I was called by the chairman and asked to come to, I guess it was a Zoom meeting or an online conference. I assume it's either a Google meeting or an online Zoom thing, but we went and sat down through it. And there's a gentleman named R.T. Wright, who apparently has been assigned. I don't know if you guys know his name, but R.T. Wright was the, is the lead with Davenport and Company. During the process, I wanna make sure you understand a couple things. I wanna make sure you guys know that the county has authorized Davenport to put out a bank-qualified lending for over $11 million, $11.3 million in fact. And Davenport is awaiting responses from private bank placement. Could be Citizens, it could be Benchmark, it could be, Town of Blackstone, we actually borrowed from a bank in Mississippi a few years ago, believe it or not, on something very similar because the rates were very good. So that is taking place. In addition, I want to make sure you guys know, Davenport has applied on the county's behalf to the Virginia Resources Authority, which is a lending quasi-governmental institution that was created by Act of General Assembly that does bond pools in the spring, in the, excuse me, in the winter, in the summer, and this year they're planning on doing one in the fall. So I wanted to make sure you understood that they're looking at two parallel tracks for financing for $11 million, $11.3 million, $7 million of which is estimated for the radio system project. $4 million is the number they're talking about for the animal control shelter. And this is the part I don't like. And $300,000 for cost of issuance fees. That equals $11.3. $300,000 for cost of issuance is obscene. There is no reason that figure should be discussed, presented, or even contemplated for the taxpayers in Nottaway County to pay. That number should be probably under $60,000. But they have a VRA application and a bank placement paying themselves in Sanz Anderson, the bond council, a total of $300,000. I have not been able to find a Davenport agreement that states you guys are committed to that, but it is the dollar figure. When asked, R.T. responded that he did not have data that would separate those dollar figures for an allocation of all three, and that's been two weeks ago. I still have not heard from him. I have spoken with people who I consider to be friends and compatriots in this profession. I think the number probably is more realistic, about 20% of what they're anticipating making from the county on this lending, okay? Being as such, I also have read their report with their plans of action or their recommendations. I want everybody to understand their plan and their recommendations won't require this board, but will require the next board to raise your taxes over five cents, which would be equivalent of more than 10% increase in taxes, okay? More than 10% increase in taxes. For those of you running for election, you get to pay the bill next year, okay? In addition, there's an expect, there's an expectation that the county will use a portion of its reserve funds and draw interest off those reserve funds in order to pay this debt service. Their estimated debt service annually would be $850,000. A portion of it paid by a tax increase, a portion of it by $250,000. Apparently, the county has already started setting aside for capital projects and for debt service. And the third item would be to take $5 million of $13 million of undesignated reserves, setting it aside for a capital improvement fund and paying debt service for 22 to 25 years with the interest off that debt, or off that reserve money. I don't like any of that. In the same report, Davenport's telling you you've got too much money in the bank. Typically, a municipal government should have 15%. I think you've heard that from Paul Lee and Ronnie over the years, and we all have worked out 15% of your general fund budget is what is recommended as a minimum by your auditors. Currently, based on Davenport's report, you're at 75% coverage. 75% of your general fund budget, or the equivalent of 75% of your general fund budget is held in your undesignated reserve. Kudos to the Nottaway County for having done that. That ain't easy to do. We did it in Nottaway, Ben and I, and worked on it, and worked on it, and we're about $4 million, and it was tooth and nail trying to get that thing done. Kudos to the Board of Supervisors for being able to do it. But instead of raising taxes, and this doesn't build a gym, this doesn't build a courthouse complex, it doesn't do any of that stuff. It's a dog pound and for the radio system. My recommendation to you guys is to slow this process down. They really wanna get closed, and they wanna move forward. And I'm still waiting. R.T. told me he would have a sidebar with us on a question that we have, but I haven't heard back from R.T. I would recommend to the board to seriously consider putting stops on this. One, certainly until they can explain their $300,000 fees. And two, let you guys sit down and digest a tax increase when you've already got 75% of coverage of your general fund in the bank, okay?
All right, and you're not suggesting by any means to stop the process?
I, thank you. You have enough tools, the board has enough tools, that you don't need to stop any of these projects. I'm not advocating taking $11 million out of the bank because that would be taking us below appropriate threshold. But I think because you do have that cash set aside, you don't have to bind your reserves and you don't have to raise taxes. I think you can do these projects without an increase in taxes. Now, I ain't telling you two years from now that if you decide on a very expensive courthouse project or a very in-depth capital improvement plan that the schools may have or something like that, that you're not gonna have to do it. But at this time, as you sit on $13 million, I don't think any proposal that includes a tax increase is appropriate. Personal findings, and I hope that's a thought-provoking statement. But I, I think it best that Davenport ceases at this time and not proceed on with this bank lending or the VRA. I think there's interim financing options that can keep the animal control shelter project moving. We hope. We open bids up in a couple of weeks, and they're gonna be very low, and everybody's gonna be surprised, and it's gonna be wonderful. But we don't know that. But even if it comes in at $4 million, I still believe you don't have to raise taxes to do it, okay?
All right, board members, y'all got any questions of him on, about this, this second?
I think the $300 million, $300,000 is way out of ballpark, too.
It should be $60,000 or thereabouts.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, just me personally, board members, I'd be in favor if the board took a formal vote to stop this VRA process.
And the bank placement process.
Yeah, the bank placement process. But that does nothing to stop anything else on the projects. That is just securing the financing. The rest of it continues to move on as, and there's actually that, what do you call that financing? That intermittent financing?
Intermittent financing.
Intermittent financing. It's also available for, just so these projects don't get stopped or halted anyway. But until we can get some clarification on that, I'd be in favor if someone wants to formally put a motion on the floor because this, I believe we probably need one because this whole thing was started by a formal motion.
Okay.
I saw a move. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's halted. All right, next item is going to be the bowling alley lease. Mr. Van Norbeek.
Will, I'd like to say thank you to our sheriff, who was sitting in the back of the room today because I called him at 7:37 Saturday morning, and I said, "We're gonna have a train wreck up there at that bowling alley. We need some help." And I came up with a couple of ideas, and I don't know if Robert endorsed them immediately, but he came up with the best idea. Let me call the owner and talk to him. And he did so, and that event was canceled. Drunk bowling, I'm not even sure what that is, but drunk bowling was canceled Sunday night. In part, thanks because Robert was able to speak with that individual and say, "This is probably something you wanna reconsider, and let's get together today, this morning." At 10:00 a.m., I met with John, LRA, the sheriff, and the owner. I think it's Munir. Did I get that right when he told me? Is that correct, Munir? And he was a gentleman throughout. But I reminded him after reading the lease, and hopefully everybody's read the lease pretty closely, you ain't gotta read very far into it. Second page. "For and in consideration of the rents and covenants herein, set forth landlord hereby leases to tenant, and tenant hereby rents from landlord the demised properties for the purpose set forth in paragraph 1, section J." And it says, "A bowling alley." That doesn't mean all the other shenanigans and foolishness everybody's had to watch and witness for the past two months down there, between the dancing shows and the rainbow drink offers and all those kind of things. "I go further to say, and for no other purpose other than a bowling alley, without the landlord's written consent, which consent shall be at the landlord's sole discretion." It's up to you guys what you allow over there. We talked today, and he said, "What about little kid's birthday parties on Saturdays?" And we probably still need to work on that because I told him no, and then we started softening a little bit, and it does seem unreasonable that little kids can't have a birthday party or Robert's church group can't go there on a Sunday to go bowling. I think we still need to work on that, and we may need to keep those during daylight hours until we get a further, something prior to 5 o'clock that events that have to be concluded by 5 o'clock in the interim until we can clearly define. We have instructed him, any event, including future birthday parties, in future everything, needs to be put in writing, submitted to the Board of Supervisors in time for your board, your LRA board, to meet every other month. So he's gonna have to get on the stick and present these to the Board of Supervisors. It's his job. He was embarrassed. He expressed embarrassment. We showed him the videos. He expressed that he has children at home, that he didn't really wanna see that sort of thing, and he was embarrassed that his operation was exposing the folks of Nottaway County. I appreciate his candor. I appreciated his directness and his fairness. Appreciate the chairman for coming because I think it lended some political shoulder to it. And again, Robert, you do a good job. Thanks, man. And you helped out. You had the best solution, all right? So in the future, any event will come before the Board of Supervisors that is not public bowling. No private parties. And I was glad to see that they self-reported that it was a private party, and they closed the doors. It was on the front page of the Courier Record. And so, we appreciate the folks that work at the bowling alleys for being courteous to tell us exactly what was going on. It is not permitted. No event at the bowling alley, if it is not open to the public and bowling is legal by lease. Item number two, it is also a violation to have activities other than bowling or indoor video games at that facility by zoning code. And I think that's another tool that the Board of Supervisors has in the future. If there are continued problems, I think zoning also is something that you can do to restrict what's going on over there. I think you can terminate the lease. I think you can use the zoning. And we've also had building code violations where they built a hatchet-throwing facility out in the front that staff was able to get them to comply and remove, okay? The bowling alley is not open for the shenanigans, nor was it intended to, nor shall it continue. It shall stop. It must stop. It's a public building, and it's not okay to do that. It's okay for people to go bowling, and that's what it was sold to them for or the lease was signed to sell to them, okay? So, he understands it. He said he's gonna change his manager out there.
Yes.
And the new manager, hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be able to meet with them. I think he said Jordan would be the new manager. The existing manager is not gonna be at that site, perhaps moved somewhere else, I don't know. But we need to hold their feet to the fire, what they've done to you guys. I'm interim, so I don't get in trouble. But to Robert and to you guys and the elected people in this county, who tried to do the right thing by making a public facility available for families and people to participate in, it's turned into a Facebook shenanigan foolishness. No more. The rules are clear. The rules are understood. He said he understood them.
Yes.
And we're gonna move on in that form and fashion. We may have to work on some birthday parties in the near future, but what I would like to do is say those birthday parties, so we don't find out, "Whee, it's my birthday party, and I got strippers to come to my birthday party." We're gonna do them before 5 o'clock, and we're gonna do them early. So we're virtually assured they're gonna be young children and young folks.
Yeah, he did say today that they had not had any adult birthday parties since they had been open. They'd all been children.
If we limit them to daylight hours or before 5 o'clock, I think you can assure some of that because of alcohol and the drinking doesn't go on, okay?
Did y'all have any questions of Mr. Van Norbeek on this matter?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And Shane, I wanna thank you. They were actually already working prior to the events on the zoning violations with the act's drawing things. Shane and the LRA was on top of that. Good deal. Appreciate y'all keeping us in the loop with that. We really do, so, thank you, and I appreciate you being here tonight, so.
And I'll make copies of the lease. If you don't have one immediately available, we'll give one to you guys. And I've got a couple of copies, but I'll give Helen one tonight, and I've got a couple more, I think, before I pull out of here.
Okay, I've already got mine, so, all right.
There's one. Anybody want it?
You want it, Sean?
There you go.
Thank you.
New guy gets one.
All right, board members. So at this time, we're just gonna do some comments for the board before we go into closed session. Ms. Simmons, do you have any comments?
I just wanna thank Phil for all the work he's done since he's been here to help us. We appreciate it.
Will, thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, do you have anything? Ms. Schalkerton.
Just again, thanks to Mr. Van Norbeek for providing clarity and handling some of these matters.
Mr. Ingram?
I agree 100%.
All right, and of course, I've already thanked you, but I'll thank you publicly now. But, so, board members, at this time, I'm gonna try to piece this motion together. I'm gonna read it, and someone would move it after I read it. So, I move the Board of Supervisors of Nottaway County to adjourn into a closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1 for personnel briefing, performance of specific county employees specifically related to personnel matters now pending in the county administration. I'm sorry, Kelly Office.
Okay, I move that chairman would say.
Can we get a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session now.
And I would let you guys, in the audience, anticipate some action from the Board of Supervisors tonight. I don't think it's gonna be any sweeping big changes, maybe some authorization about advertising and things like that, but nothing too dramatic. I do say that I'm gonna ask the board to make a recommendation or make a motion tonight after we come out.
Board members, we are now going to, I need a motion to reconvene in open session.
So may.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now back in open session. Ms. Simmons, if you could read that please.
Certification on closed meeting. Whereas the Nottawee County Board of Supervisors have convened a closed meeting on the date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board of supervisors that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nottawee County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting was here discussed or considered by the Board of Supervisors, and three, no action was taken in the closed meeting regarding the items discussed.
Okay, Mr. Vino, if you don't mind, could you roll call the board please?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Simmons.
Yes.
Chairman Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
My glasses are fogging up, excuse me. And Ms. Shugleton.
Yes.
All right. That's a five yes to certify and zero no.
I'm supposed to sign it?
Yeah, I'll just sign that right there. All right, board members, as discussed in, we need a motion to, first of all, accept the resignation of the Finance Director, Ms. Tanya Overton.
I so move.
Can I get a, all right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, board members, we need a motion to go ahead and advertise for a finance director. Can I get a motion for that?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, board members, we need a motion to advertise for the county administrator position.
So move.
Can I get a sec, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's taken care of. Also, board members, as discussed in the closed session, the, I need a motion to increase the salary each by $5,000 for one Andrea Kelly and Susan Tucker, that is to be, become effective immediately, and it is an ongoing salary increase for each at $5,000.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, I'm short of breath. All right, so that's taken care of. All right, board members, was there any, anything else that we need? Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, stand up.[1781.88][1781.88][applause][1782.88]